And thank you for coming. We have eight board members present and accounted for, so with eight board members, we'll call this meeting to order. And tonight, the moment of silence and pledge of allegiance was to be led by Ms. Fugit, but I do not see her here, so Ms. Roundtree has volunteered to do that.
I did volunteer. Please stand, remove your caps. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and just as for all.
Okay, unless someone just came in, I don't believe we have any elected officials with us tonight to recognize. But, board members, I want to make sure that we have plenty of time to complete our annual board evaluation in time for our annual workshop retreat that's scheduled for September. So you should be receiving the link by email over the next few days, and if you can fill that out and submit it in a timely way, then we can get those results back. It's hard to believe it's time to do another one. We have a couple of special recognitions tonight, and we'll be sharing information in just a few minutes, but welcome to all the robotics teams and several of our 2017-2018 retirees and their family and friends. Changes to the agenda, Superintendent Thomas or Dr. Roswick is going to request that agenda item 7C10 be withdrawn due to new federal funding regulations requiring a bid for purchases over $10,000. So do I have Mr. Norman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to take personal privilege, privilege on item C3, this request from Human Services for scripting for team observations. So, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any other changes to the agenda? Okay, all in favor of the agenda, given the request and the personal privilege, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. So, let me introduce Shannon Jackson, the Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and she'll help us with our robotics team recognition.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tonight, it is my privilege to honor our first robotics teams in Knox County. Combining the excitement of sports with the rigors of science and technology is first robotics. High school students call it "the hardest fun you'll ever have." Under strict rules and limited resources and constraints, students are challenged to design and build an industrial-sized robot to play a difficult field game against competitors. Every part of robot, robot's coding, structure design, and more are done by the students. We are fortunate in Knox County to have industry partners, mentors from the field that lend their talents and resources to help guide the team. We have exceptional teacher leaders that offer hours upon hours of their own time and then possibility to make it to the world competitions, and they lend their resources and help guide their teams. Each season ends with a regional competition and then a possibility to make it to the world competitions. Knox County Schools wants to thank all that have participated and led our students. This amazing learning opportunity would not happen without each one of you. If our teachers are here, they would just stand. The district currently has the eight robotic teams, and we will start with our 2017 World Championship qualifiers. Hardin Valley Academy, Team 3824, RoHoptics, if you would come forward, please. LNN STEM Academy, Team 3966, STEM punks. South Doyle High School, Team 6517, FTW, for the win. It's not open. Carly, the certificate's not open. Farragut High, Team 3140, Flagship. Farragut doesn't need to get too close to their seats because now we're calling for the 2018 World Championship qualifiers, which is Farragut High, Team 3140, Flagship. So, two years in a row. And our second team that qualified in 2018 is our Halls High Team, Team 4576, Red Nation Robotics. It's comprised of Halls, Powell, and homeschool students. Madam Chair, that is the last of our teams. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to recognize their efforts.
You're all are welcome to stay with us. We would love to have a full audience, but should you need to slip out, you are certainly welcome to. We do have one other special recognition, which is very special, and that's the 2017-2018 retirees. So we wanted to take just a few moments this evening to recognize all of our employees who have retired this past year. A majority of these folks have dedicated their lives to Knox County Schools and our children, and they deserve both our appreciation and our admiration. Obviously, not all of them could be here this evening, but on behalf of the entire board and Superintendent Thomas, thank you for your hard work and loyalty, and thank you for all you did for our students and community during your years of service with Knox County Schools. It does not go unnoticed, and we are very honored to recognize those of you who could be here in person tonight, as well as those who could not. If I can ask all the board members and the superintendent to join me up front, Ms. Cote will read the names of each of our retirees that could be here this evening, and as your name is called, if you would just please come forward for a photograph and receive your certificate.
As the board members and Superintendent Thomas are making their way up front, I just wanted to note that many of our retirees that are here tonight have worked at multiple schools and several different locations, but I'll be sharing with you the last place that they worked with us and where they will be retiring from. Our first retiree is Kathy Alexander of AO Lots Elementary School. Norma Burkett of Halls High School. Norma Burkett. Next is Lori Drennan from Carter Elementary School. Dr. Charles Thomas Frye Jr. of Bearden High School. Next is Irvin Hines of Green Magnet Academy. Robbie Howard, also known as Coach, at South Doyle High School. Linda W. Miller of Halls Elementary School. Irene Patterson from Halls Middle and Halls Elementary School. Sonia Sanders from Carter Elementary School. Tracy Barbara Shelley from Fair Garden Preschool. Gary Spencer from the Central Office. Trudy Hodges Sturgill from Chris and Berry Elementary. Jana Waldroop from Farragut Middle School. And last, but certainly not least, is Jay Wormsley from Halls Middle School. Are there any other of our retirees that joined us this evening that I did not receive your information on?
Dr. Drummond, you may want to hire Ms. Roundtree as a recruiter for subs. She did quite an excellent job, but we really do appreciate, we heard so many that had signed up today or were planning on it, and that's great because we know the classrooms will be well-cared-for, so that's wonderful. So we'll move on to Ms. Roundtree, if you'll start our agenda items.
Item 7 is, item 7 is consent agenda, and just a reminder that items number three and 10 have been withdrawn.
Okay. Motion made by Ms. Horn, seconded by Ms. Roundtree, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8A, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education policy B180, public forum as amended.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Horn, all in favor, is, I'm sorry, is there any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
8B, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education policy I381, integration of TCAP scores and student grades as amended.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Roundtree, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
9A, approve application and receipt of funds from the State of Tennessee Department of Education School Improvement Grant in Year Four for the 2018-2019 school year in the amount of $200,000 designated to sustain in current strategies at Vine Middle School.
Motion by Ms. Dethridge, seconded by Mr. Norman, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
9B, approve memorandum of understanding with the State of Tennessee Department of Education for the Coordinated School Health Project for fiscal year 2019, and receipt of grant funds in the amount of $185,000 with required matching funds in the amount of $15,000.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Roundtree, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
9C, approve receipt of increased funding in the amount of $96,660 from the voluntary pre-K grant from the State of Tennessee Department of Education designated to support the purchase of curriculum and training for Connect4Learning.
I move.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
9D, approve additional allocation in the amount of $35,089.49 from the State of Tennessee Department of Education on the Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Grant for fiscal year 2018.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman, any discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to know what you're going to do with that.
Dr. Roswick.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Ms. Hill. So the, and I was looking through, I'm making sure, is this E or D, I'm sorry?
D.
Okay, D. These were, these were dollars, so typically what happens, this hasn't been a common practice, but this is where we're trying to move now. Back in March, you all approved the consolidated budgets, and those are all for IDEA, for Title I, Title II, III, Perkins, all those that came. And then, what the state does throughout the year is they'll allocate certain more dollars that are pushed out to the, to the districts, and then we'll do it. Typically, we haven't come back every time those have happened, but we're trying to do that to be more transparent this year and make sure that you all are aware where we're going. So with these, these are additional dollars that the CTE program, they had their equipment replacement list, and how they were doing that, and how things were cycled to go through that. So they'll use these Perkins dollars first before they use any general-purpose dollars, so they'll just move forward quicker on that replacement or additional pieces for that. Yeah, and there was, there was one that was from last year as well, I think, and D is $35,000, and $71,000 new for this year, and that also went to, if you remember, CTE had a waiver to move from class sizes of 20 to 25, and there were some labs that didn't have enough equipment as far as computers for that. So, the first thing Dr. Wilson did was purchase those, and then after that went to replacement cycles for equipment.
Thank you, Dr. Roswick. Any other discussion on this item? Okay, motion was made by Ms. Roundtree and seconded by Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Owen and Mr. Norman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
9E, approve additional allocation in the amount of $71,310.87 from the State of Tennessee Department of Education on the Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Grant for fiscal year 2019.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman, any discussion on this item? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
9F, approve receipt of funds from two State of Tennessee Department of Education Perkins Reserve Consolidated Grants for the 2018-2019 school year in the total amount of $20,000 designated to site licenses and industry certifications.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
9G, approve memorandum of understanding with Great Schools Partnership for the 2018-2019 school year for a grant in the amount of $220,000 designated for arts-integrated elementary tutoring at Beaumont, Bell Morris, Chris and Berry, Dogwood, Green, Lonsdale, Maynard, New Hopewell, Norwood, Sarahmore Green, South Knox, Spring Hill, and Westview Elementary Schools.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Owen, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
9H, approve memorandum of understanding with Great Schools Partnership for the 2018-2019 school year for a grant in the amount of $135,000 designated to tutoring centers at Holston, Northwest, and Whittle Springs Middle Schools, and one additional middle school, and Central Gibbs, Karnes, and West High Schools, and one additional high school.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
9I, approve memorandum of understanding with Great Schools Partnership for the 2018-2019 school year for a grant in the amount of $125,000 designated to teacherpreneur grant recipients to be announced in fall 2018.
I move.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
9J, approve memorandum of understanding with Great Schools Partnership for the 2018- for the 2018-2019 school year for a grant in the amount of $25,000 designated to funding a portion of a data analyst position within the Knox County Schools Research Evaluation and Assessment Department, which may be renewed for up to three years with an annual review.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Roundtree, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
9K, approve memorandum of understanding with Great Schools Partnership for the 2018-2019 school year for a grant in the amount of $24,000 designated for the Leaders for Readers Program at Ball Camp, Beaumont, Bell Morris, Fountain City, Green, Enskip, Lonsdale, Maynard, New Hopewell, Norwood, Serra Moore Green, South Knox, Spring Hill, West Hills, and Westview Elementary Schools.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Ms. Roundtree, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
9L, approve receipt of grant from Great Schools Partnership in the amount of $9,683 in contract with Great Smoky Mountains Institute at Tremont for Lonsdale Elementary School's fifth grade trip at a cost of $15,444 using the grant and other donations.
Motion by Ms. Deathridge, seconded by Mr. Norman, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
9M, approve receipt of funds from the Verizon Foundation for two grants in the total amount of $100,000 designated to continued support of the Verizon Innovative Learning Schools Program with Digital Promise at Bearden and Carter Middle Schools.
Motion by Mr. Norman, second, I mean, by Mr. McMillan, seconded by Mr. Norman, any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries.
10A was withdrawn, 10B, approve resolution to recognize the benefits for safe routes to schools and active student transportation.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman, any discussion on this item? All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
10C, discussion and possible action on the 2018 through 2021 strategic plan. And I just wanted to let the board members know that Ms. Fugit was traveling back from a business trip, and she is stuck in traffic, so that's why she's not here.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Deathridge, seconded by Ms. Roundtree, any discussion?
I'd like to consider putting this off for 30 days to give community time for input.
Okay, so we have a motion to put this off for 30 days to give the community time to weigh in on this. Do I have a motion, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, did you not already have a motion on the floor?
We did have a motion on the floor.
Okay, okay, just to discuss, okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay, so...
I can make that as a substitute motion if you like, but I was just putting that out there as discussion to discuss.
I think that would be better, so do you want to make it as a sub-
I would say that that's a substitute motion to defer for 30 days to give community time for input.
Okay, so Ms. Owen made the motion, Ms. Roundtree seconded it for the substitute motion. Any discussion on the substitute?
I'm sorry, I lost.
That was Susan, Ms. Horn seconded, but I was just laughing because she raised her hand.
Okay, well, okay, so where are we now, we have a substitute motion, we have a first and a second, and is there any discussion on the substitute motion? Okay, all in favor of the substitute motion to put this off for 30 days to give the community time to weigh in, and in light of the fact that Ms. Fugit is not here tonight, so... Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. Okay, motion carries to delay this for 30 days as a substitute motion. Okay, I think that's it, and Ms. Roundtree?
Okay, we have three people signed up for a public forum. Our first speaker is Gavin Gambusa. Gavin? Our next speaker is Kim Kredic. Our next speaker is Debbie Stafford.
Hi, I'm Debbie Stafford, and I want to thank you all for taking the time to hear me today. I came in two parts, one was to support Kim, so I'm sure she's delayed in traffic or somewhere. I have two children that are currently in Knox County Schools. My 18-year-old daughter, Ally, who has Autism Spectrum Disorder, and my 15-year-old, who is a typical student at Powell High School. I'm going to start with what's going on in the Powell High School band, and I know it comes as, most of you are completely unaware, I don't know if Ms. Bowns received my email earlier. And I'm going to take a deep breath. Back in the spring, three to four female students in Powell High School marching band approached the then-associate band director, Ms. Mezanetti, and reported a male student had been sexually harassing them, and stated that they had been sexually assaulted in such a way that the student would grab their breasts there behind, and they would ask him, tell him, sometimes forcefully, to stop. And his response was to make flippant remarks, laugh, and continue doing it. Some of the parents found out about this because the girls were afraid their parents would freak out and did not tell them when the police called to notify them that their daughters were part of a sexual assault investigation through Knox County Police Department. Those girls were taken to Knox County, and they were interrogated by the detective, Detective Thompson, who then also interrogated the suspect. Detective Thompson stated to the parents that the DA determined there was not enough hard evidence to get a successful prosecution, so they were going to decline from doing this. Since that time, several of us band parents have asked Mr. Shaw, who until this moment I have had the most immense respect for as a band director in person, several of us have asked Mr. Shaw to please remove the perpetrator from band. We do not feel it's safe for him to be in a student population of approximately 300 students. His response was that he could not do anything. Several of the parents have talked to the principals at Powell High School. They have either not returned our phone calls requesting a conversation. One parent, and I understand this is hearsay, but I'm going to say it anyway because I think it's important. One of the parents stated after a meeting with one of the principals that her daughter was told to just suck it up and get over it and move on in life. I'm here because these girls are not going to suck it up and get over it, neither are us parents. I ask each of you, I don't know how many of you have daughters, but how many of you would be okay with knowing your daughter's breasts and other private sexual parts had been intentionally grabbed against their will? Their will, this is not consensual in any way. These girls did not fight back because they feared getting in trouble. If you hit in band, you're dismissed. So we don't understand why a boy that has been reported by multiple female students of sexually assaulting them still has a place in Powell High School marching band. This has been going on since May. Several of us involved have chosen to stay silent and stay private because we hope that we could come to a peaceful resolution. Until this moment, I have had the utmost respect for Powell High School. I'm deeply upset by this turn of events. This is the Me Too generation. I, you know, I just don't know what more to say. I'm trying to suppress my anger in this, and I ask each of you how you would feel. I don't have any sons, I only have three daughters, my oldest one's 21, who also graduated from Powell. So I want to ask you collectively as a school board, do you think it's okay, one, for the band director to say it's okay to continue having a boy in band? Huge ban, there's no possible way to have constant supervision of him. Knowing that this has gone on repeatedly, this is not an isolated case of he said, she said. And why it's okay for the band director to dismiss other students, which he's done in the past. The band handbook specifically states the band director and the faculty of Powell High School have the right and the responsibility to remove anyone from band that they deem necessary. So I ask you all, why is this boy not being removed from band? And why are we not ensuring that this band is a safe place for girls and boys alike? I'm not going to bring up specific names because the girls involved wish to remain confidential. They don't want to be harassed. Some of them have reported that this specific student has cornered them in the hallway and asked them, "Are you telling on me? Why are you telling on me?" These girls should be able to go to school and get an education without being cornered in the hallway from someone that is fondling their sexual organs and then treating them like they are the problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and Madam Chair, I know we already called Ms. Kredic, but I saw her come in, so...
I was just saying, this is the fastest board meeting I've ever seen. Kim Kredic, Knox County. I came before you on Monday, I hope you all got my email with the resources that I thought might be helpful to inspire maybe you all to think about Knox County Schools education for students with disabilities in an inclusive setting as possible as to uphold their rights. And I really wanted to, you know, you've received the complaint that I made. I tried to go through Scott Bolton, through the ADA Compliance Coordinator, and I was told that you don't take systemic complaints. So he told me to go to OCR or TDOE, and I did just that, and I've been in communication with OCR. So now there's a complaint out there, and the school year is coming up very soon. And so I wanted to first use my four minutes left to not take up any extra time to first ask if you have any questions because I'd be happy to answer them in the time that I'm allotted. Nothing about special education from a volunteer advocate's perspective who's been trained in this. I'm a Partners in Policy graduate back in 2004. I've been to maybe hundreds of IEP meetings at this point in time.
Ms. Kredic, Gary Dupler, Knox County Law Director, on behalf of the board, public forum is meant to be a time when individuals can come and speak to the board. Under that Policy B-180 that you referenced on Monday, board members may have questions if they need some clarification, but it's not meant to be a dialogue, it's meant to be time for you and other individuals to speak your piece.
I understand that, and that actually was, you know, has been my understanding all along. But when I realized that you were allowed to address me, and I haven't been able to get any dialogue any other way, I thought that I might make that available to you all since, I mean, I keep going on and on with this, and I will. I will keep going on and on with this because we've already achieved tremendous success through preschool, and all we need to do is do K through 12, and I can go away. I advocate very strongly, my favorite things to advocate for are inclusive opportunities for students. I've run an inclusive surf camp, I ran the exceptional orchestra. That's advocacy too, it doesn't have to be a fight. But every time I do something like that where kids with disabilities get this incredible two-day surf camp or six-week musical opportunity, I realize when the parents say, "My gosh, this was the best thing, this was the only thing they're really truly included in where they belong, where the whole family can participate," that's what spurred me on to say, it's got to be at the school level. That's their life, and they're spending seven hours a day in the schools, and they have the right to be fully included with supplementary supports and services. So in a nutshell, just to explain it as best I can in the time I have left, you're at an IEP meeting, regular ed placement with supplementary supports and services. That includes resource room and itinerant teaching. So even though it's a special education setting, technically, resource is, it is viewed as a supplementary support, just like a one-on-one aid, just like so many things ascribe accommodations and modifications. What Knox County Schools has done, it's fine to have what we call a CDC-A program. Other districts call it CDC. But it's a comprehensive developmental program meant only for those students who require a replacement of the core content. What Knox County Schools has done is had this middle modified program that the state allowed, and I think the state was told, "You're not allowed to do that. Modifications can and must be done in the regular ed setting." So they zapped the program, but Knox County Schools is still placing kids in that used to be called CDC class. And when you publish course codes in middle school progression plans and high school progression plans, I don't care about the number, I don't care about these course code numbers. But if you won't listen to IDEA law, then the only thing I can do is communicate to you through what you publish and what your schools are enrolling the students with disabilities in. And that's how I feel we can talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, that concludes public forum.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move adjourn.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just in an effort to not leave the perception that we are not hearing our public forum speakers, Mr. Thomas, I would appreciate it if you would follow through on our first speaker with whoever's appropriate so that she does know that we have heard her.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Okay, we had a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Meetings adjourned.